He's always trying to pawn that illegal elk off on people. He's always trying to pawn his elk off on people. Elk.
Do you have any elk burger?
Okay. Let's call the order, the meeting to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
My pleasure, agents, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the deputy city recorder please call roll?
Counselor Salvage.
Here.
Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Dykstra.
Here.
Counselor Uffers.
Here.
Counselor Workman.
Here.
And Counselor Man is absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Just remember to turn your mics on and be close enough so we can have it documented. Consent calendar, agenda, Lebanon City Council agenda, July 20th, 2023. That's all that's on the consent calendar. Do I, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has passed. We'll move into regular session. Number one is naming of interim city manager. That's presented by me. When I sent out the email for this meeting, I felt it was vitally important that we, we establish an interim and, and satisfy all the legal benchmarks that we need to satisfy so we can move forward as a city in a legal, legal manner. So, does anybody have any suggestions for interim?
I suggest Ron Whitlatch.
Is there any motions on that?
I move to name Ron Whitlatch interim city manager.
Second.
Motion's been made to, uh,
I already apologized, so.
To name Ron Whitlatch as interim city manager. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has passed. Uh, we'll move on to the congratulations, Ron.
Or we apologize with condolences.
Uh, number two on the regular session here is city manager pro trum, powers and duties will be presented by Ron.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, one of the things that came up this week, uh, in terms of what your interim city manager has the authority to do and not do is, uh, the charter lays out pretty well that it has to be a vote by the council to hire folks or fire folks. I'll, I'll use those two terms. Uh, so what this is, um, this memo here is we've got three, uh, active recruitments, in fact, in various stages, uh, some of which are really close to being, uh, we've got candidates that are ready to fill. Those would be the community development assistant. That's not a new position. We had a, a staff member leave in, I think it was a couple, three weeks ago. Took a different job. Uh, we've got candidates for that. Uh, they had interviews today for the mechanic. I should go back. The community development assistant does not impact the general fund in any way. Um, it's paid for through the building fund and also our utilities. Uh, the mechanic, uh, interviews were scheduled for today and they had some good interviews from what I hear. I don't know if they've made a decision. That is a cost savings measure for the entire city. Um, we were using Benton County, uh, to a great expense. This will probably save us. I don't know exactly what it'll save us, but there is some cost savings to that. Uh, and then the police department has communication specialist open and it sounds like they're getting close to that. So we need per charter, uh, five, uh, yes votes, uh, is the way I see it, uh, in order to move these forward and hire those folks. So that is the request tonight. Any questions?
Are these just from my knowledge? This is something that if we weren't in this circumstance would just happen?
Yes. Yes. It's, it's, it's based on the way the charter is written, as soon as you have an interim city manager. Uh, I think it was put in place so that you didn't hire an interim and all of a sudden it came in and just started going rogue or crazy, you know? I, I, I would assume that that's what it is. So basically the power lies with a five person vote for, uh, either hiring or termination of employees.
So you're asking for, uh, a vote to let that hiring take place?
Just for these three, just for those three positions. That's all we're asking for. Yes.
Who makes the decision?
In, in terms of?
Of who, who actually gets hired?
Uh, we would make that decision internally through the interview process. We've got a vetted process that we go through. It's just, we need your approval to go through that.
To go through the process.
To finalize the process.
Finalize the process.
New ground is this a motion and second kind of thing or we just vote?
Uh, just, um, uh, I, I guess you, Trey, I'm gonna look to you. Just a motion? Okay.
So, so I better understand this. Is this actually, we would vote on this or is this voting to give him the, the authority to, to make those decisions on employees exception or, uh, hiring restrictions noted, blah, 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 blah?
Yeah. I mean, I think the motion is to, uh, to grant, uh, the, the interim city manager the authority to continue the hiring process of these three positions and to make the decision ultimately to, uh, to make the hires based on the requirements set out in the charter.
Okay. So it's,
It's not a blank check. It's just for these three only?
Just for these three.
Just for these three? Okay.
You'd have to come back via for, if, you know, for a terminate, for any kind of a termination for, you know, any other hires, we'd have to come back for the position. Again, you're not hiring the individuals. You're giving him the authority internally to make the hire.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
I would make, I would make a motion that we, uh, allow him to continue the hiring process on these three positions.
Oh, seconded.
Motion's been made to, uh, give the interim, the authority to hire these three positions. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has passed. Yes, please.
Red.
Thanks. I'm new at this, Michelle. Thanks.
Been a long day.
So I would note that, uh, the first, uh, uh, first item of naming, uh, Mr. Whitlatch as the, uh, acting city manager, the last time he did it, there was a, uh, a compensation, uh, for taking on those additional duties. Uh, that would be addition, uh, decision of the council as to whether, uh, you know, whether he deserves it, which I think there's a lot of duties that he is taking on. So you can know my position. But, uh, that is a council decision that, that should probably be made. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ron. Uh, last time when you were acting as interim, it was a thousand, a thousand extra a month?
Uh, yeah, that's, I believe that's what it was.
Which, you know, that was during COVID and, you know, he got us through a few little things.
Any discussion?
So is there a suggested figure that's been discussed or is this just wide open now for council to discuss?
I'm only presenting what he made last time, um, and that there's a, it's a decision this council needs to make as to if he's going to get a, uh, what do we call it? A stipend? Yeah. It's stipend for taking on the position and how much that stipend would be.
Is it fair to ask Ron how he feels about this? Was a thousand dollars fair last time? What's the added responsibility level for you?
I'm thinking inflation's kicked in, so it needs to be more.
So, so there, there needs to, and I appreciate that. There needs, so the, the, the entry level to the city manager position is roughly that compared to where I am now. So I think that's fine. I don't really feel like I want to do any more than that because I'll be honest with you. Um, there's a lot of things that I'm not gonna do in terms of, or be able to do, uh, with trying to manage the engineering department too. So I think that that's probably a fair thing. You know? That, that would just be my.
That's fair input. Thank you. Yeah. I appreciate that.
Any other discussion?
Well, when we did that before, it was during COVID, so it's been a while ago. You're not exactly entry level anymore.
To this position I would, and, and, and again, I would, I, I think that that's, that's fair. I, I'm, I'm fine with that. So you guys, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want more than that because I don't feel like I'm gonna be given to give what that position really deserves. Uh, it's gonna be keeping the ship straight and, uh, doing, doing what we need to do to keep things moving along. But some of the ancillary things that, you know, you would see in a city manager, uh, those, those are probably gonna fall by the wayside.
I think it's fair. It's, it's, I think it's justified too with the,
I was thinking twelve hundred or so.
It's, it's roughly in that neighborhood. It's, I, I don't remember the exact figure. Uh, they, Angela had put something together.
Is it easier just to say match the, match the compensation of the, and what would entry levels city manager pay?
Yeah. I mean, and that's, that's, that's.
Rather than naming a number, just give, just pay him what the entry level city manager would make?
Yeah, and that's, that's fair.
Is that an actual known number or is it a rough number?
It's a known number. It's, it's in the, uh, Brandon can tell us. Yeah.
It's the great thing about working in government. Uh, you can go online and see what everybody makes. So no secrets.
Kate, you gotta make sure he comes up with the same answer. You double checking us.
No, I was halfway through the equation when he started yelling. Math is a four letter word.
Well, I can make a motion unless you guys wanna keep.
Is there a motion?
What is the, what is the amount? Like, what does that come up to as a monthly amount? If we have the, Brandon mentioned seventy dollars and?
Maybe Brandon should come up to the mic.
That's a little over ten thousand a month.
No, I meant additional, like, because we're not paying Ron an additional ten thousand dollars a month to be our city manager.
Yeah, definitely put him in a different tax bracket.
So we're, that's what I'm, I'm just trying to come up with a, like a number like.
I think it's about eleven hundred and change.
Thank you. Eleven hundred sounds great. Let's just do that.
So the bottom range of the city manager is one thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars more a month for Ron.
Good.
I like that.
Yeah. That, that's why I was thinking twelve hundred. Allows for a little inflation and actual is closer to the number.
I feel like the entry level thing makes sense. Explainable and I don't think, I think we're splitting hairs at that.
Yeah, I, in, in all honesty, I, I'm not doing this for the money. So, um, I'm doing it for the punishment.
We'll see if we can make it.
Then why are we paying you more?
I don't.
Well, I, I would, I would make a motion to, uh, change Ron's pay to match what the in, uh, entry level city manager pay is.
A second.
As long as he's in his position as interim city manager.
For the duration, yeah, for the duration.
For the duration as he's in that position.
There we go.
I would second that.
Been seconded? Motion's been made. It's in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has passed.
Thank you for your service.
Oh, yes, indeed.
Trying to get you more. I'm sorry.
I appreciate that, but.
Jeremy cut me out.
So we'll move on to the, uh, third item on the regular session, city manager recruitment process. I wanted to have a discussion about this tonight so we can, we can start moving forward on finding a replacement. Actually, I'm gonna have the, this, the city attorney brought up a good point. I'm gonna let him voice that point.
Well, actually I had talked previously with Michelle. If Michelle wants to.
We're gonna hot potato this, huh?
Well, it's up to you. I mean, I know that I talked to you a little bit about it and I know you were kind of extrapolating on it and.
How about, it's your idea. You go for it.
Well, it's, it's nothing. I don't think it's anything.
It's just something I've been personally chewing on and I, I do like this idea. So go for it.
So, you know, we've, we've always jumped into a, a certain pattern of, uh, recruitment process, which is, you know, a professional agency that comes in, tells us what we need to do and all timing and all of this other stuff. And it, 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 those of us that have gone through it a number of times, always, not, not because of the people that are presented and it has nothing to do with, really with that. It's just kind of the, this, this process. And it seems like there, these, these people cycle through and, and they have, uh, there's, there's a, there's a certain bias, I think, from any of the agencies, uh, that are pushing certain candidates for certain reasons. And sometimes we don't, I don't think know all those reasons. That being said, you know, maybe there's a better way for Lebanon. Um, and a suggestion that I had was if we formed our own committee, could be a couple of members of a council, a couple of members of the, of, of a couple of directors or doesn't even, you know, a couple of employees, you know, most likely it would be a couple of directors. And then a couple of people, uh, you know, a couple two from the public, uh, go on this committee. And basically, uh, you know, we can call it a headhunting committee. Let's pool our knowledge. Everybody that has a suggestion of somebody that they've worked with, that they know in the industry, that they've heard about. We start vetting them. The six, the six members start vetting them and say, yeah, let's make a call, see if there's, you know, they'd be interested, see if, you know, uh, you know, if we can find somebody through a process where, you know, we just go out and say, hey, we, we want somebody that wants to be in Lebanon. Um, you know, we've heard good things about you. Will you consider, consider this? Um, we, we also do the same things that we would normally do through the, through the, uh, Prothman or the other ones. You know, we'd put the ads out there. I mean, we'd have something that would go on the League of Oregon Cities and some different, you know, websites and that kind of stuff and invite applicants to apply. Um, and, and that committee would also look at all those applications. But those people would also reach out to any counselors, anybody in the public that has an idea of, of somebody who might make a great Lebanon city manager. And they don't have to come from the public sector. I mean, they could come from a different, I mean, you know, they could come from a nonprofit sector. They could come, you know, there's a lot of people out there that, uh, that have those management skills, which is really what, what you need. Um, not necessarily somebody that has spent forty years in municipal government, although that's good too. Um, so it, it may or may not work. We may end up saying, geez, we just wasted three or four months, but, uh, it might work. Um, we would have to formalize the process in a certain way to make sure that we could still have certain discussions in executive session, which is a lot easier. Um, certain things have to be done. We'll have to have a process. We'll make sure that we comply with everything that we have to comply with to be able to do, do the, uh, do the, uh, recruitment and then have some discussions in executive session, session, which really is only fair to the people that we're, you know, we're talking about and talking to. Um, but we'd also have public involvement. We would have, you know, we would have the opportunity for, as soon as their names can be made public. Obviously sometimes people have jobs and don't want them, people in their jobs to know that they're interested in a different position. So we have to respect that. Um, but at some point that has to become public and it has to be a public process, which is, you know, we explain to them upfront. Um, but that's kind of my suggestion. Um, it might be a little bit more, you know, obviously Donna would have a big part of that, um, as far as the listings and the, getting it on the, uh, getting it on the websites and probably helping prepare a lot of the, uh, of the recruitment documents, which we can, we certainly have a lot of examples over the last fifteen years. Um, so we could use those. Uh, it's just an idea that may, may, may be a little bit outside the box, but maybe something that's right for Lebanon.
Is the, going through a, a formal company, is that expensive?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I think Ron and I talked, we're not positive, but we think it was, you know, close to thirty grand last time.
Yikes.
Yeah.
Beyond cost.
They, they do a lot. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not criticizing their involvement, but.
I think it's important to, I mean, we'd invest the time in this. This is a big deal to me. I don't want somebody else to make this decision for us. I don't think we need an outside consultant to tell us what Lebanon needs. That's just my opinion.
Well, I mean, they would, we would tell them what we want in that city manager and they're supposed to go find him. I think when Trey first brought this, I was a little concerned. I was like, how does that look like? And then I started look at, looking at what's actually open out there right now. And knowing that there's only a handful of these headhunting companies that go out and look. I mean, we're looking at Silverton, Sandy, Union, Monmouth, Durham, Madras, Burns. And then I just talked to the mayor of Albany yesterday, who said they're hiring an assistant city manager too. Um, which probably pays in the scope of what our position would pay. So we're, we're gonna be, those groups are all gonna be the same people that are gonna make that circuit is my fear. So, which is why this idea appeals to me. I think at the end of the day, we sink three months and maybe delay writing a thirty thousand dollar check for someone. Now, if someone can hang on for maybe up to nine months, that would be my other concern, but.
Should we go back to that compensation?
I, I do like this idea. I think, um, you know, even just looking at the Boys and Girls Club, they made a recent hire from someone that's from the area that had the skillset to be able to lead the club. That's someone I, I bet that they'll hold on to for a long time and I would love to see that in the city, next city manager too.
Well, I think the outside of the box part is, yes, there's gonna be people coming, there's gonna be a, a set of people that are gonna go look for that. I think it's important to look outside of that set. Management skills are management skills. Just a finance degree or just being in government for forty years isn't qualification enough for me. I need to feel somebody who's passionate about this town like we are. And it's gonna be around and, and be the, like I said before, we're at a crossroads here. We're, we're a different town than we were ten years ago or five years ago. We need somebody who's aggressive and somebody who has ideas and enables and communicates.
I like the idea of a, a group. You know, I like that idea.
My concern is that we can only have two or three counselors on that small group. Can you walk through my concerns on that? Obviously.
Why not?
Yeah, but ultimately they have to bring it back to the whole council.
Yeah.
So then, okay, just walk me through this. So the subgroup, say it's got three counselors, I don't know, three staff, three community members or whoever. So once they have the finalists, then that would be the public piece where the rest of the council can engage.
Well, we haven't worked through that kind of detail. I would, I would think that we would, we would, uh, go down to a two or three people and then have full interviews with the entire council.
Okay.
And, and, you know, as recommended. So you have these, this group and hopefully we'd have two or three that the, that the committee thinks would make, be a good fit. Um, and then we do a regular like we would any other hire, do a, uh, do a interview session that might include other members of the public, all the whole council and that kind of stuff.
So flip side is when we did use, uh, the last time when we, um, went through that, I think we had six or seven that the council was able to interview over executive session. So that process, that portion won't happen until it's narrowed down to two to three or.
If you want.
It could be more.
If we did that.
It honestly, it could be more, but.
Okay.
We haven't set the parameters for it yet, so.
I get it. We could have six or seven. Okay.
Seem like anybody who.
You guys narrow it down to two or three. And then, uh, in the past, they've done not only the council interview, but then a meet the public kind of thing.
That would have to happen for sure.
Yeah. And that's at the point where we say, hey, that, you know, your name's gonna be public now. There's, you get to that point where, and they have to know that if, you know, if, if this gets down to it, this will be public that you are being considered for this job. And that's always kind of a doubt. You know, hopefully they're, who they're working for then doesn't hold that against them if they don't ultimately get the job.
Yeah, we opened, we opened up the auxiliary room at the library last time and invited the public in to meet all the candidates.
Yeah.
And then they had a chance to give feedback back to the counselors.
We did it Boulder Falls too.
But, but the issue I think you were concerned about, and I think we can, I think we can manage it, is that there will be the discussions of who to hire, will be able to be in executive session.
Okay, that's the big.
I think that was the problem. And I do believe we can work that so that we, we can comply with the requirements in order to have those executive session discussions, which are, are important when we're talking about the strengths and weaknesses of people that we don't want to, you know, who would want those out in the public, so.
Okay. Yes, that's my big concern. So. But if the city attorney, uh, says that it's okay, then I'm okay with it.
As long as the city attorney is willing to sit in on that committee to make sure we're legal.
Yeah, well, we have to talk about stipends. Just kidding.
There might be some cinnamon rolls. I'm just saying.
So am I understanding this right? That, that committee will, um, use not only active seeking out word of mouth type, but there'll be a posting by the city of Lebanon, but there will not be a recruitment process from an outside company that, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So the committee, the committee slash city council will be doing all of the, all of the work.
We will, we will soon. And I think what, you know, at least as we work through this, we will at the next meeting likely have to establish a hiring range of what we are willing. I think we have to say, hey, this is gonna be this, but we have to consider and, and I think, you know, staff will probably, you know, Brandon will be able to look at, uh, the numbers and examples and, and give us a range so that we can at least, when the postings say the range for the salary for this position is X.
Right.
And we have to determine that, um, at the next city council meeting?
I think we should, yeah. And we could, you know, the, we.
Can we not do it here?
Well, I would think we would.
We can do it now if we have the numbers. But I don't think we have the numbers.
Put that out there.
Oh, we don't.
Hi, Brandon.
The, the other thing we have to do is, uh, have HR put together, uh, job description, state requirements and what things we'd like to see.
That's what I'm saying. That's the stuff that we've done many times that we can at least go back and look at and put that stuff together. We're gonna need a little time for that.
Before we go too far down this road though, I do want to hear from the mayor and make sure that, because this is someone that you will have to work with very closely. Is, are you, what are you feeling like with this process versus working with a, an agency that comes in and handles it?
I think, I think with the, the budgetary, uh, reasons, I think we should try this.
Okay.
That, uh, um, you know, let's be honest, sometimes those outside groups, they just gather data and they just put it in a machine and go, here, here's your, some of your candidates, you know? I think this would be, uh, better for the community. I think it'd be better for the council and, uh, we control our own destiny on this and not have someone else, you know, putting it into their, their spreadsheet and going, oh, these, you know, by percentages, these are the best candidates for this job. Well, you know, of course, if we need to get to that point, we have to get to that point, but I think we should try this initially to.
I just want to make sure the train hasn't moved without you on it, so.
Yeah, to save the taxpayers' money.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, I believe we would get a quality candidate.
And given, given the results that we've had, the last couple of times have not been always stellar. The, we've had to go through several cadres of applicants before we would find someone. So it's not like that, that's a real strong advantage. I don't know that I want someone moving from Vermont to here. I, if we can hire within the region, I think that's an advantage to us.
We haven't heard from Ron yet.
So the other thing you need to think about, um, is job description, which we've got job descriptions from the last ones, but I would suggest that you review the job description and make sure that you like that. So, uh, that's something that we could bring back to the next council meeting. Um, or it can be, I can even email out what the latest and greatest is. And then also I assume that you would want to run this through our human resources department. All applications, just a normal process, open till filled type thing.
I think someone that looks a lot like me said that.
Can we, I know that the mayor will not be at our next council meeting. So can we have that emailed out and then individually reply and have that data compiled for the next council meeting? That way he can review it too. So it's not.
Is that something we can put out, Donna? Yeah, we can, we can put.
Similar to like an evaluation or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I'll, I'll be going, yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, I mean, obviously they'd all be subject to public disclosure, um, any comments or anything that you send in on it. But I don't think it violates any meeting rules because we're not, we're not deliberating or making a decision. We're commenting, but they would be subject to any kind of a public, uh, public information release.
Basically, we'd be reviewing the, um, the job description and making suggestions for tweaks or what have you.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily something the council has to vote on.
Anything, so. We, and then we can discuss it in person at the following council meeting.
And have the.
And have everything there after it's compiled and we can discuss it then. And then changes, decisions or whatever will be an open meeting.
And I didn't know, Mayor, that you weren't gonna be here at the next meeting. Are you gonna be able to join by video or phone or anything? What are you going?
No, he will not be.
I will not be able to.
That's the best.
I'll be out of the country.
That's the best kind of vacation. I need to go back to Brazil.
Well, I'm not switching my phone off, phone over to international, uh, rate, so, uh, I will not be able to attend, so.
It's nice having a life. I don't need a vacation.
Is the city gonna pay for that?
I think, I, I think Brandon was gonna say something. Brandon?
I'm working on finding the, our latest market analysis for city managers.
This works out well then.
Those numbers are all out there, man. It's, it's, you know, that's the thing about public service. They're, the numbers are there.
Know where to look.
There any other, any other discussion on, uh, the recruitment process?
I think it's a good idea that we try it ourselves.
Yeah, I mean.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Terms of staff time, what are we, I mean, obviously Donna's gonna have some staff time and then I assume Angela and what are we looking at hypothetically?
Oh, yeah.
How much of a lift for you guys?
I, really, it's, I, I think once you get the job description put together, it's a matter of where we're advertising and just making sure that we get all the applications back to one spot. I would assume that you want to see all applications and not have them vetted by our HR department?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. So really, I don't, I, I'll have to talk to Angela, but I don't see, uh, a huge lift on that.
Okay.
And then putting the, it's just a matter of getting the job description out and, you know, what you're looking for. We can put together something that looks similar to what Prothman did last time. And do you use that as your recruiting and, and where to take that? So.
And then at the next meeting, I think we probably, you know, designate the committee.
August. The mayor will of course have a spot on that committee, just to be, so, so you understand while you're on vacation, you will be. while you're on vacation, you will be voluntold.
Well, and.
No, I would just assume that you would want.
We have to have a decision on how many on the committee, you know, just recognizing that the more people on a committee, the harder it is to set a meeting.
This all falls within the recruitment process, so we're not going out of bounds by continuing to talk about it, correct?
We're not what?
This all is talking, this is all talking about the recruitment process, so it's still sticking to the agenda at this point. If we continue to talk about the committee and how many people would be on the committee and et cetera, at this meeting and not necessarily in August.
Yeah, we can talk about anything we want.
Okay. I'm just trying to solidify as much of it before you're, you know, on vacation, so.
Yeah, since you're taking over when I'm gone.
Yeah, I don't want to have to make all of the decisions, so.
I know, I know that, I had a, a meeting with the fire district today and, uh, fire chief, he would, he would love to be involved in this situation, or this, this recruitment because of the relationship from the fire district to the city. So I'm just throwing that out there, so, since I'm going, going to be gone, but, uh.
So we're thinking, how many, six?
That was my suggestion, but that's a decision you guys need to make.
You're thinking two staff.
I'd go with an odd number.
Yeah.
No more than seven. That way you don't end up with three and three split and not able to do anything.
That's fine.
That's two staff, two counselor, three counselors and two community with Chief Verdandi being one of them essentially, if he's willing.
Yeah, I would say two counselors and three community, but that's just me.
Mm-hmm.
Two counselors and the mayor?
He's a non-voter and he can't vote unless it's a tie. We could have three.
He's on the committee, but he can be on the committee.
You can certainly have.
He's going to be on the committee.
Certainly have three counselors, or, I mean, mayor's a counselor, too, technically.
Technically.
So you certainly have three. It's up to you guys. I mean, but I just liked, you know, the feeling of having a lot of public input is good, too, so.
I agree with that. Would, would my vote be just for ties?
You can, you're not the mayor in that community.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm asking to make sure. Okay. No, I agree. I think the community, there should be community members on there. I think it's important for them to have buy-in into this process and, you know, every time they come and speak, we, we are able to glean off a lot of information that we don't hear otherwise, so, no, I agree with that, so.
Brandon, you got something?
I do. So HR put this analysis together using five comparable cities. It was last done in May, so it might need a smidge of updating, but I believe that at that time they grabbed whatever colas we knew were coming for those organizations. With that information, our existing salary for the city manager falls within 0.31% of kind of the average of those areas, so it's, it's relatively in line with, with those five cities, which include Milwaukee, Ashland, Klamath Falls, Pendleton and Central Point. The existing salary range is $12,298 a month to $16,333 a month.
Say that last number again.
$16,333.
Thank you.
Can you calculate the annuals?
So about 95 to about 180?
Yeah, I can give you an annual.
Two, nine. You can't argue with numbers, so.
$147,576 at the bottom end, $195,998 at the top end.
And that's just salary?
That's just salary.
So then you, you got to pay the over on top of that, benefits.
Yeah, yeah, the, the other payroll expenses, we call them, so benefits, likely PERS.
Is that still about 47%?
Uh, I think it was 33, according to the budget document at the time, 33, 35%.
That's down.
And it, it certainly depends on, you know, who comes on board. So the PERS rates are going to be higher for somebody who has been in the PERS system for a longer period of time.
Sure.
Benefits can, can be up or down depending on number of dependents. There's a lot of places now that are, that have either housing or vehicle stipends for city managers, so there's a lot of other variables at play related to that, that you'd have to consider as well.
So we're looking around 202, 10 on average, all in?
Uh, if you started at the bottom, you are probably looking at, yeah, probably somewhere between 200 and 210.
Okay.
This, this ineffective fixed cost, we have to pay it, we're paying it now, right?
Uh, I mean, there was, there was some savings with your last city manager, just based on, on her selections, so you are not paying that right now.
But this is, that's the market price.
That's the market price.
I think you were. You're saying that number is what we were currently paying?
You were paying that salary rate, but there was savings on benefit costs and retire, uh.
Right, just the number, the salary per month you're saying is.
The salary is what you were paying.
What we were at already, so we either can start there or adjust.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's always, it's always a range based on experience, qualifications, that kind of stuff.
I'm fine with the range based on experience and qualifications. It's like, yeah.
And do we have any documenta, or any way of, how do, how do you gauge when you, when they bring their experience and, and years of service or whatever? Is there a way, do we just pull a number out of the air and go, oh, it sounds like a.
Negotiation.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, it's not like years of service.
That's when I get involved more.
No, I just want to make, I just want to make sure, because, you know, yeah, anyhow. Any other discussion?
So we, we also, for appointment of people, how do we want to accept, I'm sure there's more. I know Rebecca Grisel offered, said she would be involved, you know, she reached out. How do we want that process? I assume that we need to open that up to anybody that wants to apply or, you know, send us a letter, you know, I don't think we have to have anything formal, but just say, hey, if anybody's interested, they should send it to Ron, Donna?
Is this the, the group?
The public, but then we also have to decide who from the directors wants to be on it as well.
What I'm talking, all right, is this the group that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they have to be, I would think one of the requirements, they have to be within the city.
Yeah.
You know?
I would, I would suggest our ex-mayor, Paul Aziz, since he's been through two, two city managers.
I don't know how, how involved the community is going to feel if there's two of them, especially if one's the, one's the police, the fire chief, that really is one other community member if we only have two, right?
I don't know if I'd call the fire chief a community member.
But, but, I was just doing kind of the math in my head and we're running out, if we have seven people running out.
I get the balance of, it is harder to get, if you've got 14 people on this thing, it's going to be impossible to get them to meet.
Yeah, you won't get anything done.
But if you want the community representative, it feels like there's got to be three or four of them that are on that, but I.
Well, the community will still have that opportunity. This is just the first blush of the, the applicants, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you wouldn't necessarily need to have community members as you're vetting these and get to a spot. In the past recruitments for city manager, that there's been no, I don't think there was on the last one, we had a group of people that.
We had a group meeting, but that was after the, that was after the interviews.
That was, that was, that was pre, or that was post going through the applications and whatnot. So if you're talking about just a committee, you're not necessarily talking about an interview committee. You're talking about a committee to go out and find people that this body and whoever you decide is going to be with you is going to do those interviews. And at that time you could involve, you could have public involved in that piece, but.
You're, you're, that committee's going to be the wide mouth of the funnel that's going to scoop all the stuff in.
There could certainly be a bigger committee at the end when we're doing interviews and that kind of stuff.
Right.
We'd bring, you know, a, a whole lot more people, more, more staff, more the council and, and more public.
I think initially, initially the, the committee's going to be, what are our parameters? And that's where we get input initially from community members and other folks. And then when the, they start coming in, then it moves to a different tier where you'll have more community involvement beyond just that committee.
And, and one of the things I think you should consider on that committee is, you know, who, who has those connections, you know, who has traveled and who knows people in other areas that may be interested or in other, you know, they're, they would know people, you know, or have personal connections, you know? For me, it's always the personal connection that, that seems to lead to successful hires of some kind, not necessarily friends, nothing like that. It's maybe somebody you met at a conference that you were impressed with. Maybe it's, you know, uh, you know, you had to work with somebody on a hard project that was, you know, that might be interested. I mean, it's, you know, so I think that it's not a, it's not as much, I, I mean, it is a vetting process, but it's also how are they going to help us go out and find the best candidate, right?
Mm-hmm.
So what are, what are their skills in reaching out and having resources beyond Lebanon?
So the initial count, or the initial committee would be, I'm hearing, it'd be made up of seven, be some council people, myself, community representation, and that'd be it. Is that what I'm hearing? Or am I hearing this wrong?
No, that's right. But to be clear, anybody could make suggestions to the, to this committee, too. I mean, I would say, you know, hey, counselors that aren't on the committee, please, if you have a name, if you have somebody you think we should look at, hey, I'm going to call him and if he's interested, can I pass him on to you? I mean, what I, what I'm, what I envision, and maybe this is just all utopia in my head, is that it's, it's truly a community effort of, let's go find somebody that wants to be in Lebanon, that, you know, likes the community of Lebanon and, you know, whether it's recommended by, you know, somebody in the community or recommended, you know, somebody on the council, somebody, a director that has gone to conferences and met people, I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, let's just get all the possible names we can and vet them out and bring them back and, and see what we end up with.
When, since you have the mayor and two counselors and all this, is this open meeting laws apply?
No. It's, it's not a, it's, it's, it's.
I always wondered when you get too many counselors in one spot talking.
That's why I said you can't have four.
But if I might, I would recommend that, that being very careful about if you're, if, if somebody outside of that committee is offering up a name, it should really just be to one of the, the counselors on that group, because if all three of them are, are sitting there and you've got a fourth one, all of a sudden you've got a meeting.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I don't know if the, if the recommendation should be that the mayor kind of helps field those names if other people have recommendations, so that it is tight lipped and you don't run foul.
Well, and I'm just wondering about just having it as an open meeting when we do meet. That way there's, it avoids all issues.
You know, if there's somebody that, you know, that we're going to talk about that flat, there's no way that he's coming or leaving his job that he got and he loves, but somehow that gets out, that, you know, miscommunication, that Lebanon, he's talking to Lebanon about a job and that hurts, you know, we can't have that out in public.
Well, no, but when you first meet, it's public meeting and all the input for how are we going to do this?
Oh, how, that part, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, once the names come in, then no, you can't have it.
Right, right.
No, I think it's a good point, there has to be a conduit where the actual suggestions come to one place.
Right, because if we do, if we open it up initially while we're putting together the parameters and we take public comment on it, public's more involved in it, they have a say in it, doesn't mean we're going to go that direction, but give people a say and a lot of times they'll come up with good ideas of something we need to look for.
Sure, and I think that, that we, the next meeting should have a public hearing on the process. I think that would be fine.
Yeah.
You're giving me weird looks tonight, Michelle.
It's because I'm going to be gone and she's.
Oh, that's why.
That's why she keeps smiling.
Let's add as many agenda items as possible.
I know, I'm trying to get, to get this committee set up here, so we don't have to do it in August.
We can't do that, we're going to set it up at the next meeting.
I mean, you know, we could, we could get the numbers figured out.
Well, yeah, you should get the numbers figured.
And the council representatives can probably be figured out.
Do we miss, I'm lost in the trail of this a little bit. We wouldn't have staff, other directors in that first committee?
Oh, we would. I would, right? It's staff, two staff.
Numbers, yeah, I just, we didn't mention that part before.
Oh.
Two counselors, two staff, two members of the public.
And the mayor.
Yeah.
Is that seven? I think so. That, that seems.
Last night it was. I, I did concrete work, so I don't know.
Anything else?
Just to clear this out, this committee will just be the initial, I guess, brainstorming, getting names, putting together a list of names. When this comes to actually interviewing candidates, the, the city council will have.
Yeah, we're going to have interview sessions where we have the council, we have the members of the public, you know, a, a larger group of members of the public and then the, a number of the staff. So everybody gets a chance to interview those people that are, you know, that are finalists, if you call them finalists.
Right.
Okay.
It's a recruitment committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is really just recruitment to get us the best names possible for the process.
Okay.
Kind of, kind of what otherwise Prothman would bring to us, you know, those.
And to clarify, when you say we collect the names, we don't collect the names, they submit into HR and they collect the names. So there's confidentiality there.
Because part of what this committee is going to do is reach out and there's no people that we reach out to, there's no, I'm not going to, you know, there's no way I'm moving to Lebanon. Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I know that feeling.
Yeah, you can't, you can't be afraid of rejection.
Well, as soon as you advertise it in like League of Oregon cities and, or.
Yeah, you're going to get applicants.
You're going to get applications.
Yeah.
So I would assume that that interview, or not interview, the recruitment committee would want to look at those and vet those, that, and then move it forward that way? Is that what I mean?
Yeah.
And, and my suggestion, and, and again, this, you know, I'm flying by the seat of my pants here, don't get me wrong, because we're going to have to bring back more formalized of some of this at the next meeting, but, you know, I, I think that once you reach out to somebody and they actually do have an interest, right?